We'll call order the February 1st meeting of the Morris Town City Council. And welcome those of you who are here with us again to start a new month. We began with our intubation in place to our flag, Lieutenant Councilmember Al Agher.
Hi, Your Heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we feel it's an honor to serve our community and You, Lord. We just ask that You bless our... And give us wisdom tonight, Lord. Lord, we love You and we thank You for Your grace, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmembers, let's check in. Now, we have six of seven present today. We have the minutes of the January 18th meeting. If there are no corrections, I'll even have a motion to be approved. If you have a second, all in favor, say aye. Those that have minutes are approved. Well. June, would you like to join me up front, please? Well, June Cosson today is a farewell. And it's odd when you're saying farewell to somebody you didn't see that long ago. We said hello. But, June, we are in admiration of your long career in the police department. So, let me just say this. Whereas Lieutenant June Cosson began serving the citizens of Morris Town with the Morris Town Police Department on April 3rd, 1988. And whereas Lieutenant Cosson holds an Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice from Walter State Community College and a Bachelor of Science Degree in Business Administration from Tuscaloosa University, and has attended numerous specialized schools. And whereas Lieutenant Cosson humbly and bravely served as Patrol Officer, Sergeant, and Lieutenant. And whereas Lieutenant Cosson served on a variety of special teams, including Honor Guard, Special Response Team, Crisis Negotiation Team, and in unique roles as a crime scene technician and victim witness coordinator. And whereas Lieutenant Cosson retired from the city's employment on January 5th of this year, now therefore, I, Mayor Gary Chestney, on behalf of the City Council of Morris Town, Tennessee, do hereby congratulate and commend Lieutenant June Cosson for her 34 years of dedicated service to our wonderful community and wish her health, happiness, and well-being for the future. Now, later in this... Well, maybe written real soon. You're really getting a gift from the chief. And also, this watch goes to you. And it's a safe watch, so it's a good one. So, we know it's good.
Thank you so much.
There you go.
Lieutenant, I want to thank you and commend you for more than 33 years of service to the citizens of Morris Town. It's a job well done. Thank you. On behalf of the Morris Town Police Department and the city of Morris Town, I would like to give you your service weapon as a token of our appreciation and just to show you that we really do appreciate not just what you've done, but what you stood for. Thank you, Mayor.
It's hard. I just want to say thank you to all of the department. I've had a wonderful career here at the police department. You know, we all work together. We all love each other. We back each other. We stand beside each other. And it's just been wonderful. And I appreciate all the chiefs done to make this department what it is. And I think we could stand against any department in the state.
Thank you. Lieutenant, we didn't get you any bullets.
This is the time we open the floor for citizen comments about items that are on the agenda. We have a very brief agenda today, but we do have some items. And if anyone wishes to address any one of those items, this is the time. You have three minutes. Identify yourself by name and address. The floor is now open.
Good afternoon. My name is Louis Chan. And the address is 316 East First North Street. And my concern is of a property that I own that the city wanted to tear down. So far, as I mentioned before many times ago, that just for this case, the city had already made a lot of mistakes. And the mistake is black and white documented by document produced by the city's department. From the very, very beginning, they labored all the units wrong. And stuff from there, that is more mistake. When they are trying to citing that some... I did not comply some of the order. They send out the document by using the different wrong document. And that is... Those... Though all those things I have already mentioned to the council member, and I hate to repeat it myself. You guys tired of me, and I'm tired of myself to repeating the same thing. But just less focusing on something more reasoned, which is the bidding of the work to have the demolition contractor to demolish the building. The last one that you guys cancel yourself, you know that you already made a mistake. That is the mistake, one of the mistakes out of maybe four or five that even a layperson like me, without any kind of training, as any kind of the trading, training on any kind of trading as constructions or legal that I can find. The last one, you guys make a mistake by not involving some of the bidder that is sent out the bidding through the mail. So, when you guys opened the bidding, you guys just completely forgotten one of the bidding. So, you guys have to repeat yourself and waste taxpayers' money during the process. And at the same time, the reward you gave to the last winning bidder, the credential of that bidder might have... In my mind, you guys can prove me wrong. Might have some credential problem. And on this time, when you guys send out the bidding again, and the bidding supposed to be on two different buildings, once again, out of the seven bidding, at least three of them was confused by the wrongly labored by the department. And because of that, they bid on more, the higher bidding. Out of the two buildings, the three contractor, they offer more money on the three units and offer less money on the three units. That is all caused by those mistakes created by the city. And you guys just refuse to look into it deeper. And you guys refuse to pick the two of the lowest of the costing. You just go to pick one of them rather than the lowest combined two of the buildings. That is a lot of problem, as I told you guys before, with or without the building. This matter would not be end.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else come forward, we'll close this portion of the meeting. And we'll go to the awarded bids and contracts with under item 9C on our agenda. First is the approval of purchase order 22001529 to Detroit Salt Company, LLC for the purchase of rock salt in the amount of $49,949.60. This is via the statewide contract.
This is a budgeted item that we replenish our salt supply. Hopefully, we won't have much more need to apply it this winter, but that's always a horrific thing to say as you're heading into early February. But as you indicated, it is from statewide contract. We recommend approval.
Is there a motion to accept this recommendation? Then we have a motion to a-here. And we have a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's vote. And that motion carries. Next is the approval to surplus the service weapon assigned to Lieutenant Jim Cosson, a Glock 9 Meloniger Model 19 with serial number BAVN962, being transferred to Lieutenant Cosson in honor of her 34 years of service to the Morris Town Police Department.
This is a procedural step necessary to declare the surplus. You've already given it away. I recommend you approve the declaration or go rest of June with the hat and slide on. So, we recommend approval.
The motion to accept that recommendation. Motion to center. And we have a second. Any questions or comments?
I think you ought to at least give her one bullet.
Two. She's better than that.
Do you want to add that to the motion? Hearing none, let's vote. And that motion carries. And we have the approval to award the lowest of best bid to Environmental Holding in the amount of $38,900 for the demolition of property project located in 1017 East First North Street and to allow city administrator Tony Cox to enter into a contract.
Council's very familiar with this site and the process we've taken to get to this point tonight. Council did ask us to separate the bids into two components. It's our recommendation, however, given the size of the lot, the complexity of the job, that a single contractor will be much better managed and avoid conflicts in the future as the project moves forward. That helps us manage the project and do a better job overall. So, therefore, we recommend approval of reward to Environmental Holding.
Is there a motion to accept this recommendation?
Something.
Motion to Pentagon. We have a second. We have a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, let's vote. And that motion is approved. We have one appointment. This is a mayor's appointment. And there will be a reappointment to the Morris Town Housing Authority. This for a five-year term to Gary Johnson. Gary came on to fill out an unexpired term due to an untimely death of a board member. We appreciate his willingness to serve and his willingness to continue in that capacity. And that term will expire in February 15th of 2027. So, thank you to Gary. And we've got the city administrators report. Tom?
I just wanted to thank council for the time and effort you put into the recent strategic planning session. We covered a lot of issues over the weekend, but probably the most significant was the discussion about allocating resources from the federal recovery dollars that is coming to Morris Town. We still have a lot of work to do to finalize the list, but the draft list for the benefit of the audience includes some very significant investments in our community, making things better. And those include a state-of-the-art public safety communication systems in cooperation with Hamlin County, a provision of water supply at Exit 12 to facilitate both protection and economic development, a series of stormwater infrastructure investments across the community, several investments to support tourism and enhance the quality of life through special events around the community. Also, a very significant amount will go towards street maintenance. So, when we look at all those things, you're going to see a big impact on our community. We will continue to work to develop the supporting documentation, bring that back to you as a final proposal for you to consider as we move forward. Also included in that plan is a modernization of some tools for the police department. Chief Overhold will be making a presentation on that e-sitation project in the workshop following the meeting. So, that's what we have for today. Hopefully, we'll move forward with the allocation of those resources and get moving.
If there are items that anybody in the audience feels needs to come before the council, we'll open the floor at this time for public comment. Again, introduce yourself by name and address. You have three minutes to address the council. And the floor is now open.
Under Noe, Joe Stevens Road. I'm so glad you're back in Morris Town. That's nine hours of your time. I understand it was taped by someone else on Friday. I taped on Saturday after driving to Kingsport, spending four hours there, driving back for a meeting or meetings that could have been held right here for the people who vote, the people who put you in office, the people you represent. And that gets back to taping your meetings. It's time. Those meetings in Kingsport absolutely should have been taped by you. It shouldn't take a citizen having to drive up there early in the morning while you've spent the night in the luxury motel hotel to take that Saturday session. It shouldn't take somebody having to take off work or give up time, their own time, to drive up there on Friday to take your five-hour session. You had some very, very important issues and discussions. And the people who elected you should have been able to attend. If you'd had five people come up there, you didn't have a place for them. You never intended or expected anyone to come. And that was shown clearly by the room. There are people who cannot come to your meetings. We've got COVID right now. It's at 59 seconds, Gary. They have COVID, they have illnesses, they're handicapped. They have children's activities. They have work. They should be able to see all your meetings. One's up in your work session up in Kingsport. Your work session's here. And especially, your meetings right now. Hamlin County does it. Carter County does it. Loudoun County does it. And I'm not getting... Even getting into the cities right now. You can go and find your own list. It's not hard to do. Why don't we step up and tape your meetings? The people deserve that.
Thank you, Ms. Noe. Anyone else wish to speak?
I feel the same way. I think we should stay here. Taxpayers pay the money to get things done in this city and in the county. And you all should be accountable to them. Shame on them. Shame on every one of them for going to Kingsport. I saw the tape. And, you know, you could have done the same thing right here. I'm sure Mr. Wallace would have just stayed at Hampton Inn. That's a nice motel room or a nice motel. We got nice things right here where you can do your business. And you need to do that. You know, I took a lot out of the city as growing up as a kid. But I have nothing against none of you, none of you. Because you're all in God's hands, just like I am. And I want to do the right thing and be honest and truthful. And I hope you all want to do the same. And let your people know what you're doing. They vote you in. They should know what you all are doing. Don't go behind their backs and do things that you shouldn't do. Let them see what you do. Let them see that you're honest and truthful and that you stand for the right thing. Let them see it. Don't go behind their backs. Thank you.
Who's next?
Louis Chan again, 316 East First North Street. I want to bring it to the attention to the public. Well, just a little bit of background about myself first. I never vote for any kind of local election. I never pay any attention to any local issues, let alone vote for any local seat, position, and such. But just from this event that the city wanted to tear down my building, then I learned a lot. There's a few things I want... I would like to bring to the city's attention. First, I really appreciate Linda to bring out the openness of the meetings of our local government in the form of recorded... Not only recorded, but video recording. A few meetings back, before the council meeting, that was the workshop. During the workshop, you guys discussed things about my case and tried to communicating between you guys whether you guys have any of the members or the departments, city's building department have talked to me about my concern. And everyone tried to build up a false impression that I... Because I speak broken English, therefore, I have a broken mind. I don't understand anything. I'm basically an idiot. And everyone said that you guys have already communicated with me about my issue. No, it was never happened. You guys have talked to me, but talked to me in a form of like kicking the football from one department, one office to the other. When I talk to the building department, especially Mr. Steve Nelson... Nelson, Steve, whatever. I'm sorry. I'm confused. He would tell me that basically, decision already made. Accept your fate. Do what you can with whatever you have. When I talk... Tried to talk to the manager, city manager, Mr. Cox, the first time during one of the party you guys throw to him, he asked me to talk to the council member. When I talk to the council member, the one of the council member basically say that this is in the domain of the city's manager's office. So, basically, I'm kicking around and never have a chance to talk to anyone. I hope we have an open platform, a channel that we can talk to each other. You guys can ask me tough question. I don't mind. If whatever my offering is not up to the par, rejected it. At that point, we'll be fine. But it's... I never have the chance. You guys make the decision at the background, fade away, no one know. Even the Supreme Court, if they are not all in one direction, they will at least have one opinion from both ends. We never heard anything from the city.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Who who's next? Anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing none, we'll close this portion of the meeting and go to comments from the conclude from mayor and council. I might start this part off in just somewhat response to the lady who objects to our going out of town for a work session. Those aren't... Those travel dollars are budgeted items, and they come through the travel budget that's approved in our budget. But we're accountable for that. It's not secretive. It's not behind anybody's back. And there's not... There are no votes that are taken, but there are issues and items that are discussed. Any decision we make, any vote that's made, is made right here in front of a publicly held meeting with plenty of announcements time and reported in the media. So, there's not anything secretive of that. But what it does do is an opportunity for improvements in council relationships in that we discuss a lot of complex issues that we have different opinions on. And we're able to discuss it in a casual manner with not a time limitation or distractions or things that might call us away if we meet in this room. But I think the citizens benefit from a council that is... Can analyze things and reach conclusions and iron out differences and deal with complex issues and give our city manager and department heads a priority list on where our preferences lie. Because we reflect what, as you say, the folks who voted to send, we answer to them and we reflect their interests. And I think all in all, our citizens certainly benefit from that. So, that's my response to that. And another one or two might be unhappy about that. And you can express your unhappiness. I know that's what the open public forum is. But we've been doing this, I guess, what, seven or eight years now? It's outstanding opportunity to plan. And I think it contributes greatly to the smooth functions that most of our operations experience in as we complete goals, reach goals, and complete projects. That's the end of my sermon about that. Any other council members wish to talk about any topics? For us.
Yes. The first thing I'd like to say is the distractions that keep being brought up about the distractions of not wanting voters or people from our area to hear what we're saying and things like that. The reason that we go out of town is basically, most of us up here are business people. And if we stay here, and we've done this many times, when we go out to public works, things like that, I'll get a phone call, one of the other people on council will get a phone call. You've got to go do this. You've got to go do that. If you let them know you're going to be gone and you're going to be away and you're not going to have distractions for me, that's the reason that we go out of town to go somewhere. What I'd also like to say is this. When people say you're going up town, going out of town, and you're doing things that are behind people's back, and then you turn around and say, you know, the Lord's watching you, then you need to understand, yes, the Lord is watching you. And whenever you say things that you don't realize what you're saying, that's dangerous. Because a lot of times when people get up here, they don't tell the truth. They like to tell their story. They like to tell those things that are going to make them popular with their little groups that they're up here with. What I'm here is to support and to vote for the behalf of the people I represent, not just four or five people who want to get up here and say that we need to do things. But there are one good thing about what Mrs. Noe has talked about, about the county doing theirs. You know, I did decide that I would go look and see how the county did theirs. And I did. And if you want to see something, you need to go see. Because what happens is, is most of the council time is taken up by people who want to get up and talk about how bad the council people are and how disappointed they are in the council people. Well, you know what? If you're disappointed in the council people... Commissioners. No, there's people up here. If you're disappointed in these people, just as the commissioners, you've got a right to vote them out in the next election. You don't really have a right to get up here and try your best to belittle and to manipulate the system to where you can be the most popular person in the world. But whether you're talking about a building being demolished or you're talking about whether the council should do this or do that, all I'm asking you to do is to do exactly what we do. Tell the truth. Just tell the truth. Because I recommended, and I'm sure that Mrs. Noe has it on film, I recommended that we do away with this. Because I'm telling you, it is a total waste of time. A total waste of time for people to get up here and want to talk about their own little deal that they've talked about for a year and they know what's going to happen. Or somebody who wants to get up here and talk about something that the judges have already said this is the way it's going to be. I just don't understand. But if you don't want us here, vote us out.
Can I just have a...
No, no.
Anyone else?
The judge asked me to work with the city. The judge asked me to talk to the city.
And you're disrupting public meeting, candidate.
Because he is...
Because he is twisting my word.
Any other council members?
No.
If I like, arrest me. Arrest me, please, if I like.
You need to be still. Any other council members wish to comment?
I'd like to say I thank June Cosson for her service. In June, I went, after I was elected, I went on a ride along with you, and we ate dinner at 2:00 in the morning. You, we pulled over a truck with three juveniles in it, and it was my first time to go to the county jail with those juveniles, and you handled the mother coming and said, just keeping you. It was, it was an eye-opening situation, and I really appreciate your dedication and, and opening that door of knowledge to me as a councilman, which I think is measurable in understanding what I need to do to be sure my public safety is funded the way they need to be. So thank you, ma'am, and I'd give you six bullets.
Okay. What else? All right, if there are no other items to come before council and, or take a motion, that will be your turn. So it is our turn. We have, we'll take about a three-minute break here, and then we'll get back to the work session.